All right, again, everyone, good afternoon and welcome to the Board of Trustees' regular Board Meeting. Today's Monday, June 10th, 2024, and I call this meeting to order at exactly 5:40 PM. Roll call. Dr. Earl Cruz. Rudy Corona?
Present.
Mr. Frutosa Gomez?
Present.
Ms. Krista Adonis?
Present.
Mr. Alex Aina?
Present.
Mr. Israel III?
Present.
Vareal? Uh, Mr. Alfredo Perez?
Present.
Mr. Tony Torres?
Present.
Thank you. We want to agenda item 1.2 and 1.3, the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of Texas Flag in Invocation. Mr. Israel?
Good evening, everybody. Today, we have Ryan Perez, who will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Ryan Perez is from Dr. Raoul Garza Jr., STEAM Academy, with Victor Monreal Principal. Ryan Perez is 10 years old and a fourth grade student at Dr. Raoul Garza Jr., STEAM Academy. He is the son of Ralph Perez and Amada Bonida. Ryan is a member of the First National Elementary Honor Society at Dr. Raoul Garza Jr., STEAM Academy. Ryan passed all his STAR tests in third grade at MEAT's level for reading and Masters in Math. He enjoys playing soccer and football and is currently a member of the Harlingen United 2013 Select Soccer Team. Ryan's hobbies include playing sports, chess, and creating stop-motion videos. His goals for the upcoming year are to earn perfect attendance, A honor roll, and master ratings in his STAR exams. Ryan aspires to attend the University of Texas at Austin and study law. He would like to thank the school board members, Mr. Perez, his parents, and Dr. Raoul Garza Jr., STEAM Academy, for affording him the opportunity of reciting the pledge at this board meeting. Doing our invocation today is Ms. Olivia Garza, from Dr. Raoul Garza Jr., STEAM Academy, Victor Monreal Principal. Today is Olivia Garza's birthday. Happy birthday, Olivia. She is a fourth grade student at Dr. Raoul Garza Jr., STEAM Academy. She is the daughter of Renee Garza Jr. and Rachel Variantos. Olivia is a National Elementary Honor Society student who passed all her STAR tests in third grade at the MEAT's level for reading and math. She participates in the school after-school program, the chess team, choir, and soccer team. Olivia's hobbies include playing games, playing soccer, drawing and art, making slime, going to the beach and spending time with her family and friends. Her goals for this upcoming year are to earn A honor roll again, perfect attendance, and AR reader excellence. Olivia aspires to attend college and become an engineer or scientist. She would like to thank the school board members, Mr. Perez, her parents, and Dr. Raoul, STEAM Academy, for affording her the opportunity to serve the Lord in reading the invocation at this board meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Will everyone please bow their heads? Dear Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you have given us. You have given us the gift of life and our health and well-being. At this time, dear Lord, we ask that you bless our board members and Mr. Perez abundantly and give them wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with them in their deliberations and help them make wise decisions for the good of all those who have replaced their trust and confidence in their leadership. We ask that you help them share their individual and collective gifts with our schools and community and to give of themselves in ways that make a difference in our families, in our schools, in our students, in our city. For all of this, we give thanks. Father, in your name, we pray. Amen.
We would like to present Olivia Garza and Ryan Perez with a certificate of merit. Certificate of merit is proudly presented to Ryan Perez for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the pledge to the Texas flag at this regular meeting of the San Benito CIC School Board Trustees. The certificate of merit is proudly presented to Olivia Garza for invoking God's presence
At this time, we could have the parents and families of these fine students please stand for recognition. Thank you, parents and families, and of course, we will have these photos uploaded to our social media pages, Facebook, and to our website as soon as later in the week when we have them uploaded, so those memories will be with you and downloadable on our social media. So again, I want to thank Ms. Dial, our Assistant Principal at Dr. STEAM Academy, for being representing Dr. Garza STEAM Academy here today. At this time, President Lopez, Superintendent Mr. Perez, and all the board members, parents, and everyone who is joining with us online, we come to the portion of the meeting where we recognize and we get to celebrate the achievements of students in our district, and this is probably the most exciting part of the meeting because we get to see the excellence of students and not only the students but also the staff members that contribute to their successes and their respective recognitions. And so, we're going to begin our recognitions with San Benito High School. And San Benito High School, today, we have recognizing regional golf tournament, a regional qualifier, and this regional tournament was held in San Antonio at the Golf Club of Texas on April 17th and 18th of 2024. And the recipient of that regional qualifier is Krista Cerata, 11th grade, San Benito High School. We also want to recognize the team leaders, our coaches, and our sponsors, Mr. Henry Viem and Mr. Ben Viem. recognized. Thank you, sir. And we look forward to next year. Hopefully, we'll have a state champion in our female golf club. At this portion of the meeting, I'm going to hand it over to our Director of Bands in our district, Mr. Daity Mendosa, who is going to introduce the accomplishments of our fine musicians at San Benito High School and Veterans Memorial Academy at the end of this year. Mr. Mendosa.
Mr. Perez and members of the board, thank you so much for the opportunity to do my favorite part of my job, which is when I get to come over here and boast about the accomplishments of our students. And we're going to introduce to you some of the students that are medalists at this year's solo and ensemble contest at the state solo and ensemble contest in Austin. Every year, thousands of students take part in this event that happens at the regional level first, and those who receive a first division on a memorized Class I solo or an ensemble such as a trio or a quartet after they receive a Level 1 rating from these judges and they get to advance at the state level where they get judged by a college professor. And the way the medals work over there is any kind of an ensemble, like a trio or quartet, receive a bronze medal if they receive a top rating, and then the solos have the opportunity to earn a silver medal and a gold medal. We had 22 students that came back with medals this year. We're very excited to be able to introduce them to you. Of course, it's summertime, so we don't have everybody here, but we are going to recognize the ones who were able to be present. And we are going to start, this is the instrumental department, so we have star guitar students and we also have some students from the band as well as orchestra. And so, the first one we're going to introduce is a bronze medal winner, and he's Mr. Angel Zavala. He's a sophomore for San Benito High School. And you can just wait there, Angel, and then we'll get everybody else coming in as well, okay? The next one is a percussion student for San Benito High School Band, and her name is Alaina Alanis, excuse me, and she's also a sophomore, and she's a silver medalist. And once again, the silver medals are earned by getting a Division II rating on a solo, whereas the bronze medals are a Division I rating but on an ensemble. And the next student that we're going to introduce is going to be Sonia Mendosa, who is a sophomore from San Benito High School, plays the clarinet, and she is a silver medalist Up next, we have one of our orchestra students on violin who played a violin solo and is also a silver medalist. He is a senior, a graduating senior, actually, and he's here with us. This was an event that took place that Monday, right after graduation, so our seniors were still able to participate. And this is Mr. Carlos Panola. Up next, we have another graduating senior on saxophone earning a silver medal on his solo, and this is Nicholas Torres. Up next, we have another senior who is on trumpet, earned a silver medal on a solo with a trumpet, and this is Aiden Villafranca. The next student we're going to introduce earned a bronze medal by being part of the same trio that Angel was with, but he also is a silver medalist. So he actually received two medals at the same event on the same day, one on his trio and one on his solo. So on his trio is a bronze, and on his solo, he received a silver, and this is Mr. Joshua Up next, we have the next group of students actually earned a gold medal, and the first one we're going to introduce is a junior, going to be a senior, actually, and this is Mr. Sunny Cruz, and he earned a first division rating, so he's a gold medal recipient from San Benito High School, and he's a percussion student. This is Sunny Cruz. Up next, we have another percussion student, also recipient of a gold medal at this event, and this is Jonathan Davila, who's a sophomore, gonna be a junior. Another band student, recipient of a gold medal, is on bass trombone, Mr. Jorge Segura. Up next, we have a junior from San Benito High School, going to be a senior, actually, and this is a percussion student, also recipient of a gold medal from UIL, and this is Hector Up next, we have another student that received two medals, and the first one was on bronze. He is a member of the same trio that Joshua and Angel were members of, so they receive a bronze medal by receiving a first division on that one, but then he also received a gold medal on his guitar solo, and this is Guillermo Dorantes. And the last student that we're going to introduce to you is also a gold medal recipient from UIL, but we also want to explain that he received an additional medal from UIL called an Outstanding Performer Award. And basically, what that is, is out of the thousands of students that get to audition at the state level in Austin on these days, at the end of the contest, each professor gets to select a handful of students that he or she considers to be an outstanding performer, and they are awarded another medal. It's another gold medal that comes in the mail, unfortunately, it's not here in the mail yet, but it's going to arrive soon, and it's just another UIL medal, but it's like twice the size of the regular ones. So this is not just a gold medal, but it's also a gold medal that the top 1% of all of the people that participate earned, and this is Amadeo Cohen on percussion. We want to also take an opportunity to present the staff that works with our students, and we're going to introduce our guitar teacher, Mr. Jorge Mascorro, who's here with us this We also have our orchestra teacher, Ms. Karina Vela, here with us this afternoon. And of course, we want to take the opportunity to present and to recognize the staff that worked with these band students as well, and our head director from VMA, and also our flute teacher is Ms. Dulce Rodriguez, and she's here with us this afternoon. One of the assistant band directors of the high school, who also teaches our clarinet students, is Mr. Rafael Garcia. And our saxophone teacher from the high school is Mr. Julio Barrera. Our high brass teacher, or trumpet and French horn teacher, is Mr. Noé García III. And our low brass teacher is Mr. Arturo Rivas. And last but not least, we have our percussion teacher, Mr. Jorge Mujica, here with us this evening as well. Education begins at home. So we want to be able to, we want to make sure that we take a moment to thank you, parents, who have given us the opportunity to teach our students day in and day out. It's an absolute blessing for us to be able to do this work, and we thank you for all the effort that you put forward in order to make sure that that happens, beginning and taking it back every single day. So thank you so much, parents. So if you could please stand and be recognized if your child is over here, because everything that they do, they do because you began that for them. So, Mr. Perez and members of the board, that's our presentation for our instrumental students. We want to thank you so much for the opportunity to do that. It's been a real joy. Thank you, everybody.
This is an art. I hope you all appreciate this. Okay. Can you guys see Eric's face? Okay. Now, I'm in the blue sweater, and I know I'm going to do it a thousand times. Can you switch? Thank you. There you go. Okay. Now, just smile. One, two, three. Hold it. One, two, three. Okay. Stay right there. There we go.
Again, I want to remind everyone, we will have the pictures posted on our social media. That way, you can keep them as memories as well. Mr. Mendosa, thank you very much. Parents, thank you for being here and being supportive. I know we're ready for full ball season in two more months, so it's Greyhound bad time in a few more months, so thank you for being supportive of your students, especially during summer camp. I know it's hot, but our students are there dedicated. Mr. Perez and members of the Board of Trustees, that concludes our recognitions of our students in our district and staff in our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Luis. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number three, public comment. Mr. Corona?
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Before we begin, I will remind our audience, members of the board's procedures for handling public comments. The public comment portion of our meeting is available to members of the public according to the following. At regular board meetings, the board shall permit public comment regardless of whether the topic is on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. At all other board meetings, public comments shall be limited to items on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. Anyone who would like to speak during public comment must sign in prior to the start of the meeting and list the topics they want to discuss. An individual's public comments to the board shall not exceed five minutes per meeting. Please keep your comments and criticisms civil and courteous. Please avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during the opportunity to speak. We ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own children. In addition, the participating individual shall adhere to the following. State their full name and what organization or group, if any, is being represented. Indicate the topic about which they wish to speak. Shall refrain from commenting directly on any individual, employee, or public official by name, but may refer to specific employment area, job title, or the board as a whole, and shall refrain from attacks on individuals. Lastly, if after at least one warning from the presiding officer, any individual continues to disrupt the meeting by his or her words or actions, the presiding officer may request assistance from law enforcement officials to have the individual removed from the meeting. If a speaker is seeking board resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district's grievance process. District policy DGBA has been established for addressing employee complaints. Policy FNG is the avenue for filing parent complaints, and Policy GF addresses community member complaints. Grievance forms can be obtained at any campus administration office or at the district's central administration office. Thank you. And this evening, we have Ms. Mary Main.
Thank you, Acting Superintendent Perez, Board President Lopez, members of the board community. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak. I really had a couple short ones. The first one is dealing with the compensation plan that you did have listed out there. Please go with option A, and I'll give you the justification that I'm going to do it. As a member of the San Benito High School, our auxiliary staff and our clerical staff are the reason we're able to succeed as well as we are, not just our teachers. And I'm not going to knock the admin up here, okay? But more so, our clerical and our auxiliary personnel are the ones that are really supporting us. So in your option B, you put a 2% across the board. That's nice. Don't get me wrong, very nice. But in option A, you gave the teachers a 2%, admin, which is the board level and the district level, a one and a half, but you were able to give the clerical or propose for the clerical and the auxiliary a 3% raise. And my justification for pleading for you to go that route is that while it is not going to bring them up to the amount that surrounding counties may be paying their people, but the fact that you are willing to give a bigger increase, percentage increase, to those most vital levels than you are to the administration levels, I think could be a deciding factor on us being able to keep some of the people that are looking at going to a higher-paying job for the recognition that you are valuing them more than just everybody else, all right? So please seriously consider the option A part. Also, the calendar changes. Thank you so much for cutting the high school day down, proposing to cut it down by 10 minutes. A nine-hour day is so much better than a nine-hour and 10-minute day. We still have a lot of minutes built into there. The only thing that I was looking at is that you did propose adding two early release dates at the beginning of the Christmas break and at graduation, which, again, thank you very much. It did look like it was student-only, giving the teachers a chance to get caught up on some of that. I'm just, the only concern I had about that was if the ADA only allows you three super-low attendance days, what are we going to do for this? Because it only applies to the high school and the middle school. What are we going to do to try to make sure those high school and middle schoolers show up instead of starting their vacation on Wednesday instead of Friday? And then back to my normal part, my thank yous. This was a very complicated end of year. Everything was going on at the same time. Thanks goes to those clerical people that actually came up and had some solutions that we could make these last-minute changes with, the effort they put into getting the graduation stuff set up and taken in and working everybody around. I was asking a lot of, a lot of different people. I had people being super kind, considerate, they were, I didn't get snapped at, I didn't get yelled at by anybody when we were doing some kind of little bit radical last-minute changes. We have some fantastic maintenance people that step up. Our custodial people are incredible when they are coming in to help and checking to see that you are getting help. And again, the clerical not losing their minds with everything we were trying to do all at the last minute and get all the signatures in. So again, San Benito is very, very fortunate in our staffing, so really, to help, tie this back in, to help celebrate the fact that we do have such great staff, please go with that option A. Thank you very much.
Next public comment, we have Ms. Melva-
Next public comment, we have Ms. Melva Tomas.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Perez, Acting Superintendent, and the community. My name is Melva Tomas. I respectfully come before you as a sped advocate and as a concerned guardian and of an SBCISD special needs student, Mark De La Fuente, my nephew. Marky, as we dearly call him, has been a sped student in this district since he was in pre-K. Marky's disabilities include cerebral palsy, legally blind, autism, developmental delays. Throughout his sped educational journey, unfortunately, our family has dealt with unfortunate experiences with the past special services staff and director. We have encountered school administrators, specifically the previous special services director, Failing Marky. As you may well know, sped is mandated by state and federal laws. SBIC also receives state and federal grants. Sped students, it has come to our attention that the present special services director is being reassigned and/or demoted. Myself and many other sped families are shocked and deeply heartbroken. As you may well know, sped students and their families have an immeasurable amount of legal rights. With this new change, I am here to ensure that my nephew, Marky's legal rights, my family's rights, and the rights of all the other sped students and families are not violated. New leader, new leadership, new leadership was assigned to the special services department. I didn't know this then, but the positive overhaul of the special services director of the department of the staff would turn, would soon turn out to be its redemption. Inclusion, they gave our students inclusion. Inclusion is not a program, it is not a service, but rather a mindset. The director brought this, as well as her staff, and quickly we saw our sped students getting the exposure of their accomplishments. I was also honored to serve and participate in the annual sped self-assessment committee. That was such a great experience for me. Sped students record, were being recognized for their Special Olympic competition before the school board, very unheard of in the past. Summer programs were being made available to sped students. As a sped student, Mark had the opportunity to attend ESY and summer programs. As a 10th grader, Marky was also placed, for the first time, in his educational journey as a general, in a general ed class, that is, law enforcement. He adapted and was very successful. This, to him, provided a CTE pathway for post-secondary education. His need for a wheelchair to get around high school hallways was met immediately. When Marky made a serious outcry at the beginning of his 10th grade year, the special services director made things happen for his protection and for those other sped students. Cameras were installed in every sped classroom. This spoke volumes to me. The system was getting improved. She took, the special director took full reign of the situation. While Marky's sped teacher acted as a mediator with school administrators and with me and made things happen. Another positive achievement was the sensory room. This school year was finished by five high school sped students competing in.
I am sorry, your time is up, I apologize. Thank you, thank you for your time, Mr. Tomas. Our last public comment will be Mr. Carlos Cortez. Mr. Cortez, just a reminder, you'll have five minutes, sir.
Okay, appreciate that. Uh, board members, appreciate all the time given here. I'm here to talk about my brother, Robert Cortez. He's, um, born and raised here in San Benito and, uh, hope that one of these days he can be considered as a candidate for his name to be placed on a sports complex or practice facility. Robert Cortez, uh, Robert Cortez's football career started in an early age while attending Fred Booth Elementary. He was a running back and also played defense. When Robert played high school football, he was known as one of the hardest charging players in the Rio Grande Valley. He was a two-way starter for the San Benito grounds in the early 60s. He was not a big body at 5'10" and 190 pounds, but was known as his crushing running style and being a dominating defensive linebacker. Robert was a big part in helping the Greyhounds to the Texas State semifinals as a sophomore in 1961. He also played basketball and ran track for the Greyhounds. Robert got a sports scholarship to play football at Texas A&amp;M. He began his Aggie football career on the freshman fifth-string team, but his hustle, toughness, and determination soon earned him a starting role. He was a three-year starter on the varsity defense. He was a football letterman from 1965 to 1967 and also voted, and also voted as team captain his senior year in 1967. He was known as an extremely physical linebacker. He was instrumental in Texas A&amp;M winning the 1967 Southwest Conference Championship and in the 1968 Con Bowl win, uh, with a victory over eighth-ranked Alabama. He graduated from Texas A&amp;M in 1968 and had a long coaching career. He also served as athletic director here in San Benito for, I don't know how many years, but he served there. Robert also played one year in the semi-pro football league with the Midland Roughnecks. He played outside linebacker for them. Robert Cortez, uh, wait a minute here, he was also, he's also been inducted into several Hall of Fames. In 1987, Robert was inducted into the Latin American International Hall of Fame for football. In May of 1997, he was inducted to the 10th Annual Rio Grande Valley Sports Hall of Fame. In June of 2005, he was inducted into the Hispanic Sports Hall of Fame in San Antonio, Texas. Many of our siblings and Aggie teammates attended the induction ceremony. All his football teammates spoke how tough he was, but also how kind he was. His last induction was in January of 2006 in the city of, in the City of Palms Hall of Fame in McAllen, Texas. Uh, Robert Cortez was born in October 1923, uh, October 10th, October 10th to 23rd in 1944, and is presently 79 years old. He will turn 80 in October. And what I'm asking is, there's the sports complex that is already existing in, uh, the Bobby Morrow, which the players go and suit up and stuff. I don't know if it's got a name, it's got a San Benito, a name on it. It would be great maybe for that building to be considered with his name on it, and a lot of times this, uh, nominations or the, or the people's names get put in a building after they pass away. And, you know, that, that, that wouldn't be an honor for him, it would be an honor for his family. So it would be a great honor for him to live that moment, and it would be a good thing for San Benito also, for this to happen. You know, so that's all I got to say, and hopefully one of these days it can happen while he's still alive and well, cause he's 80 years, gonna be 80 years old already. So if there's any way that y'all can consider that, I would appreciate it. Thank you so much for y'all's time. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, at this moment, let's move on to agenda item number four, Superintendent Reports.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, just wanted to say thank you to everyone who helped and participated in the graduation ceremony a couple of weeks ago. We are happy to say we graduated over 700 Greyhounds that day. To those graduates, I say good luck, and always remember, one's a Greyhound, always a Greyhound. And if you need any assistance moving forward, you know that we are always here to help. Uh, a couple of announcements as we go into next year. Uh, we have begun our planning of our five-year strategic plan. We will soon be reaching out to the public to be part of town hall meetings and working collaboratively, collaboratively, uh, creating the new goals for our district. Our plan is to begin the process mid-July, and, uh, information will be posted on our website and social media for anyone who is interested in participating. Uh, and as you know, we are officially on summer break, so I would like to thank all of the staff for their efforts this past year. Have a restful and rejuvenating summer. Uh, I do want to yield some of my time, we do have a special, uh, guest that would like to come up and say a couple of words. We have Senator Morgan Lamantilla, along with, uh, members of her cabinet, Deputy Chief of Staff Ruben O'Bell, and District Director, Gracia Galván. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you, board and Acting Superintendent, Mr. Perez, for allowing me to come today and talk to you guys. You know, my Senate District 27 represents over 50 school districts and, across Region 1 and Region 2. And in recent months, I've had the opportunity to meet with many of the educational leaders and learn that our schools are very similar, but they also have unique differences, and that's why I'm here today, to let you guys know that I welcome the opportunity to sit down with y'all and learn about the unique needs of the San Benito CISD and how we can help at the state level. I wanted to let you guys know that our door is always open and we are excited to help wherever we can. I also wanted to let you know that, so just as you introduced my two dedicated staff members, Ruben O'Bell, Deputy Chief, and Gracia Galván, uh, District Director for the area, combined they have over 30 years of state government experience. And I know that in the past, they've worked with you, Mr. President, and you, Secretary Corona, uh, on many efforts, and I look forward and welcome the opportunity to continue to build that relationship with the entire board. And I also want to make sure that that, uh, open door is extended to the entire board, but also to the administrators, to our teachers, to our students, and our parents as well, because we want to help advocate for you at the state level, help you find the funding that you need to meet the requirements the state has set for our schools, but also implement new programs and those innovative ideas that you guys are trying to fight for every day, and celebrate the student achievements and the school achievements like those that we heard today. So please do not hesitate to reach out if there's ever any assistance we can provide. We would love, uh, the opportunity to help you in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out to visit us.
Okay, at this moment, let's move on to agenda item number five, the budget presentation by Ms., Ms. Mata.
Good evening, Board President, Board Members, Mr. Perez, Acting Superintendent. I'm gonna represent the budget workshop, this is just a summary of the major programs, and then I'm gonna go over Fund 199 at the end. So for our 24-25 budget workshop, our first one is Fund 101, which is our food service program. As you can see, the local revenues would be, uh, 300,000, and that's for sales of food for our teachers or, or staff members, uh, or catering that, uh, the program provides. State funding is a matching program that the state funds the districts, that's about 30,000. And then for federal revenue is a combination of our breakfast program, the lunch program, and then the supper program. We did get awarded, um, for the fresh fruit and vegetable, but we haven't gotten the breakdown, so that's not included in here. For the expenses, from 6,200 to 6,699, which is, in essence, to repair items, the food, the non-food items and so forth, um, is 8,589,74. Estimated salary would be 3.2 million, for a total of 11,804,193. In that amount are the three food service, um, cafeteria upgrades that we have currently that you'll see in the agenda for tonight's meeting, and, um, the refrigerated, uh, vehicle that we haven't received, and some other pending one-time, uh, items that we were already approved and have not, uh, been completed. So again, we would be using a, a total of 2.1 million from fund balance designated for food service. We did receive an updated letter from TDA, I think about a week, a week and a half ago, and we are required to spend 3.7 million, so that's well within that. Um, like I mentioned at my finance committee meeting and our, at the building committee, uh, we are looking at three additional, uh, elementaries to be funded from that fund balance. I know Mrs. Soto submitted the plan to TDA, um, either last week on Thursday or Friday or this morning, cause I got a copy of it, so we will be keeping you updated on that. Any questions for the food service program?
Ms. Mata, you said there is a 3.7?
Million.
Million?
That we need to use.
And, and what is the timeframe on that, that we have to use it, Mike?
It's, it rolls over, so like last, remember, at this time, I mentioned we, we had 2 point something million to use, and we've done, um, I think Miller Jordan is the campus we did, we ordered the refrigerated, so we just keep rolling forward, and TDA sends us an updated, um, email or letter, I'm sorry, that says, okay, you have this amount based on, uh, Ms. Soto submits a, um, report, and it tells us everything that the, that the district generated in revenues, everything that we expensed, and then it gives you, this is your three-month average, and this is how much you have, you're over, so you need to spend that.
So as long as we're moving, as long as we're moving forward, we're not?
No.
We're not gonna lose any, okay.
No, at this point, since we're, uh, using it, we're, we're not using, losing it.
Thank you.
The next one is?
Ms. Mata, I'm sorry, I have a question. Sorry. Uh, the, the difference that we have between the 3.7 million and the 2.1 that we're spending, there is no expiration on that, so it continues to roll over. I just want to clarify that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, so there's not a deadline to spend that difference?
No, um, and I, as I mentioned, Ms. Soto already submitted a plan to TDA. Once that plan is approved, we can start the new projects that add up to that 3.7 million.
Okay, are we getting any more money next year for that particular grant?
This is fund balance, which means this is excess funds that she, uh, generates through the sale of, uh, items or the food that the students eat, the reimbursable meals, and the different programs that she has, so this is fund balance that, in essence, she's generating more revenue than what we're expensing. So then they're saying, okay, you have too much revenue, spend it for the improvement of the food service program.
Thank you.
Okay, for the next one is our athletic fund. This is, of course, anything encompassing athletics. Our local revenue that they generate for the different games that we have, whether it be football, baseball, soccer, et cetera, it's 152,000. The state revenue is 7,800, and that is just a small amount because that's the smallest stipends that we pay from 161 for extra-duty pay. Then we transfer in from the general fund, 636,00316, for a total revenues of 796,116. The total expenses, of course, matches that amount because it, this account is an in-and-out in essence. Normally it would be under 199, but for them to have it on their own, it's, uh, categorized as Fund 161. Any questions on 161?
On this amount, you said for this department?
Mm-hmm.
This is basically for everything that they're needing in that department, other than transportation or security or anything like that, correct?
Security is under Function 52.
Okay.
Transportation is under this fund.
Oh, transportation goes in?
Yeah, the only thing that we changed from this is that, uh, when I met with, uh, Coach Gomez, um, I know he had a concern that the stipends for the paraprofessionals was getting paid from 161, and then I went, Mr. Perez asked me to research it, I did, and we found out that it's always been like that, but I, I agreed with Mr. Perez, like, oh, I don't know why it was done, went back to 2018 and forward, and it's always been paid from 161. So this year, we're moving those stipends, because all stipends get paid from 199, over to 199, and that freed up a little bit over $50,000 that will be going back to athletic fund. fund.
Oh, okay, so you're now reducing from this amount?
No, no, we gave him back. So we had reduced 5%, just like everybody, every other department or campus, but we found that one thing that was consistently, like I said, all stipends get paid from 199. So we did reclassify those over to 199 to free up that money for him.
Ma'am, I got a question for you, and I don't know if it's a fair question to ask right now, or if you know the potential dilemma, this is for all, this is for all extracurricular activities. So I think the common question is going to be, how's it affecting our student athletes or our students that participate? You know, is it less trips, less games, you know, with reducing of these funds? So I think it's a conversation we're probably going to have with our directors and find out to see exactly this funding, how it's affecting our extracurricular activities as a whole, I'm not just talking about athletics, but?
What I did tell every director, every principal that I met with is, this is your funding at this point. Anything that you need that comes up, email me, call me, talk to Mr. Perez, and we will look at it, and if need be, bring it to the board, and that way we can discuss it. It's not a no, it's just, this is what the funding is right now, but we're open to discussion and looking at whatever the needs are, because Mr. Perez always says, and you know, I agree, that we shouldn't be hurting the kids, so.
Yeah, I don't know if you noticed, but this is a simple one, and of course, you know, talking about football, you know, our schedule is, this year's our schedule is out there, you know, we're paying teams from Houston, you know, Austin. So the thing is, that's going to be a lot of travel for all our athletes and our band and, you know, all the, you know, the participating students. So those are the things that I'm, you know, just asking about, because it's going to, and it's very obviously going to continue, you know, our schedule keeps on getting, we continue to play less and less home games and more away games. And that's for all sports and everything else, so just something to keep in mind, ma'am, just to see if we can come up with a?
I know that Coach Gomez did mention that we would have games in Austin and Houston, like you stated, and they would probably have to rent charter buses, so, yes.
And we have had this discussion with the directors and Ms. Mata, and this is a budget, you know, we try to stay within our budget, because we have to plan for the year, but we will, I wish I could predict that all of our teams will go to state for every sport, but when that happens, we do make sure that we find the funds for our students to travel and participate.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
I predict they're all going to go to state next year, so.
Okay, the next one is our band, and this is very minimal, from state revenues to 40, again, it's a small stipend, and it's actually extra-duty pay for one of our employees that travels, this is our employee. Then everything else gets transferred in from the general fund, and it's $398,576. The total, again, in expenses, is $398,816. This one, just to remind y'all, this is where we bought the trailer this past year, and we did retrofit it inside and did the wrapping, and also bought the middle school uniforms for all three campuses. So it looks different than last year, because last year it had $200,000 added to this because of those two large expenses. But this, next year, it won't be in there. Any questions for the band?
Was that one complete unit that you purchased? The trailer and, the tractor and the trailer?
Yes, tractor and trailer.
And it was wrapped? It was all wrapped. Thank you.
For Fund 163, which is choir, all of it is general fund transfer in of $140,291, and expense $140,291. If I remember correctly, this one, just the 5% was $5,634 decrease. The largest one of those three was, again, the athletics. But this one, again, everything, I've met with the directors, and all of them had concerns, just like all the principals had concerns, because their budget is being cut. But like I stated, this is a budget, I need to adhere to a certain amount. I've met with Fred, and we're looking at ADA and taxes and state funding, and we're trying to be as conservative as we can. If our ADA goes up, then the funding goes up. So again, we're trying to be conservative, and I am taking into account the additional pre-K 3 classes we discussed, that Delia mentioned, and also they're going to implement the optional flexible school day program, and we're doing a 10% on that one of students. So hopefully, it's a little bit increased, but like just the 79 students that I'm, for the optional flexible, is about $500,000 additional. So we're trying to look at everything that we can to increase our revenue, so we don't have to be so conservative. But any questions on the choir? The next one is Fund 598, which is the LED lights, it's a debt payment. We pay this completely from the general fund, as I mentioned in Finance Committee. This is a project, as you can see, I'm sorry, I'm right there. This is a project that was completed in 2019. As you can see, our first payment was in 2020. We still have four additional payments after this one coming up. I was asked to look at, because the way this program worked is, it pays for itself, in essence, with the savings of the light. So I actually did run into Bill from E3, which is a company that did this installation for the LED lights at the conference, and I asked him if they could do the study for me, and he said unfortunately, no, because we didn't do a whole retrofit. You know, it was just the lights, not HVAC, and not other items that go into play in our bill. So he did say, and which was that, what I was going to do is go back and try and track all the bills for the light, which is going to take me some time, but I will get it done. So I am going to look to see if we are saving any funds, or what we've saved from before the LED lights were retrofitted. So any questions on Fund 598? Fund 599, this is our bond payments. The local taxes, which again is at a rate of .2799, is $3,650,778. State funding, which is what we get for the EDA and IFA funding from TEA, that's $3,157,793. The transfer in from general fund is $997,351. This year, just as, we will, this year in '23, '24, we did not transfer any money from general fund to the INS to offset this, because remember, we got that settlement from TEA from what they owed us, from the IFA amendment. So this year, we save that money, but next year, we're going back to using it. So again, total revenues would be $7,805,922, with total expenses being $7,805,922. And this is our copy of the audit from 2023, as far as what the fund balance is, which is a negative fund balance, because, like I said, we've been offsetting it with general fund. And this is the payments that you can see what the total amount that we owe is for the bond payments in each year that we are owed. So right now, we're at 2014, which would be our last year. We paid 2012 this current year, so then we'll have 2016 on. So that's the presentation for these accounts. Like I said, for Fund 199, we've been looking at it, we're going to sit down tomorrow again and look at it. We are looking at a revenue, I mean, an ADA of $7,952, which is about 185 students less than last year in final ADA. We had a percentage of 92.15% attendance rate, so we do need to work on that. But like I said, we are working, and we're trying to be conservative, but also being fair with everybody as far as not being too conservative, just enough to keep abreast. So any questions?
I just wanted to add that we, the leadership, the leadership team and I were at a conference this past week, and that was the general discussion of funds, and this is across the state. It's nothing unique to us. We always hear about our attendance rate being lower than it used to be, when we had years of hitting 98% and campuses hitting 99% attendance rate. Now we're at 92%. That's a lot of funding. So as we move forward with the strategic plan, of course, that is something that I would propose we target. Parents, you know, need to be informed of the, what it actually does for our students for them to be in school. Aside from missing the school, it also, you know, takes funding away, so that's just, it's going to be one of our goals for next year, is to raise that attendance rate. We are trying, Ms. Mata always is very conservative when it comes to the amount of students that we may have lost in the past. We are shooting to hopefully not lose as many students, so that's another one of our targets. That's the reason for our partnerships with the daycare centers and trying to go to the optional flexible schedule of students that have bad attendance rates, or we just trying different ideas and trying to recuperate monies that we would have ultimately received if our students were just here, so just wanted to add that.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for the presentation. All right, at this moment, let's move on to agenda item number six, Consent Agenda Under Academic Services, 6.1, Request Approval Memorandum of Understanding Between San Benito CISD and Cameron County Juvenile Probation Department for the '24 through '26 school year. Question? Consent? 6.2, Request Approval Memorandum of Understanding Between San Benito CISD and the Cameron County Juvenile Justice Department for the '24 through '26 school year. Question? Consent? 6.3, Request Approval of the Agreement of Understanding Between San Benito CISD and Region One Education Center Texas Reading Academies for the '24, '25 school year. Question? Consent? 6.4, Request Approval Memorandum of Understanding Between San Benito CISD and Region One Texas Curriculum Management Cooperative for the '24 through '25 school year. Question? Consent? 6.5, Request Approval of the School Closure of Gateway to Graduation Academy. Question? Consent? 6.6, Request Approval of the Amendment to the '24, '25 school calendar. Question? Consent? Okay, let's move on to agenda item number seven, Consent Agenda to Business and Finance. 7.1, Request Approval of the Cash Account Report for May 2024. Question? Consent? 7.2, Request Approval of the Comparison Revenue to Expenditures for the Budget Report of May 2024. Question? Consent? 7.3, Request Approval of the Tax Collection Report for May 2024. Question? Consent? 7.4, Request Approval of the Check Disbursement for May 2024. Question? Consent? 7.5, Request Approval of the Gifts and Bequests for '23, '24 school year. Question? Consent? 7.6, Request Approval of the Budget Amendments. Question? Consent? 7.1, Request Approval of the Purchases for Over $50,000? Question? I'm sorry, 7.7. Request Approval of the Purchase Over $50,000? Question? Consent? 7.8, Request Approval of the Award Bid Proposal for RFP-0524-WCIIFF for Workers' Compensation Insurance Fully Funded? Question? Consent? 8.1, I'd like to table this, I'd like to take a motion to table this to?
You can pull it from Consent and then you can do a table of numbers.
Okay, I'm going to pull it from Consent? Okay. Question? Okay, question. I'll move on to 8.2, Request Approval of the Revenue for Vector Solutions for the '24, '25 school year. Question? Consent? 8.3, Request Approval of the Cafeteria and Furniture Remodeling for Dr. Cash Elementary? Question? Consent? 8.4, Request Approval of the Cafeteria and Furniture Remodeling for Frank Roberts Elementary? Question? Consent? 8.5, Request Approval of the Cafeteria and Furniture Remodeling for Riverside Middle School? Question? Consent? 8.6, Request of Board Approval of Board Manager for May 15, 2024 Regular Board Meeting, May 23, 2024 Special Board Meeting, and June 4, 2024 Board Workshop. Question? Consent? I entertain a motion right now to approve, under Consent Agenda, 6.1 through 8.6, for the exception of 8.1. Can I have a motion? I got a motion by Mr. Corona, can I have a second?
Second.
I got a second, Mr. Fritos, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. I had a question on 8.1, Request Approval for the '24, '25 Compensation Plan. At this moment, I'd like to take a motion to table this item? I got a motion by Mr. Corona, can I have a second? I have a second, I have a second by, I have a second by, by Mr. Reno, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries, thank you. Let's go on to agenda item number nine, Action Agenda. 9.1, Discussion and Possible Action to Appoint a Delegate and Alternate to the Texas Association of School Board Tasbs 2024 Delegate Assembly. At this moment, I'd like to nominate Chris Hernandez to be the delegate. Can I have a motion? I got a motion by Mr. Corona, can I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Fritos, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion approved. I'd like to, do you accept it, ma'am? Yes, I heard her say yes, right?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
And we need an alternate. So at this, I'll take a nomination for an alternate. Mr. Rudy Corona? Can I have a, can I have a? Okay, thank you, Mr. Corona. I take a motion, I got a motion by Mr. Fritos, can I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Reno, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Corona. Okay, with regards to the following, with regards to the following agenda items, 9.2 and 9.3, I would like to entertain a motion to take this to, take this action into executive session and take an action after executive session on these two items. Can I have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Corona, can I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Gomez, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries, thank you. At this moment, under closed meeting, in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Act, the board may move into closed session for the following reasons. Section 551-071 for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney and/or all subjects or matters authorized by law. Section 551.074 for the purpose of considering an appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public official or an officer or employee. Section 551.078 for certain board deliberations. At this moment, I entertain a motion to go into executive session at 6:47. I got a motion by Corona, second? All in favor, raise your hand? Okay, we go to executive session at 6:47 PM. We're reconvening to open session at exactly 39 PM. At this moment, I'll take a motion to approve items taken in executive session, 9.2 and 9.3. I had a motion by Mr. Corona, can I have a second? Second by Mr. Gomez, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to agenda item. 11.1, Employment Resignations, Retirements, and Terminations, Mr. Richard Perez?
Yes, 11.1, I recommend to the board to approve the employment, resignations, retirements, and terminations as discussed in executive session.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
I got a motion by Mr. Corona, can I have a second? I got a second by Mr. Reno, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries, thank you. Let's move on to 11.2, Discussing and Possible Approval of Employment of Elementary Instruction Director, Mr. Perez?
Yes, I recommend to the board the employment of elementary instruction director Diana Atkinson.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
I got a motion, Mr. Corona, can I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Fritos, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries, thank you. 11.3, Discussion and Possible Action of the Employment of the Council slash Advanced Academics Director, Mr. Perez?
Yes, I recommend to the board for the position of counseling and advanced academics director, Sandra Romero's.
Can I have a continue motion?
So move.
I got a motion by Mr. Corona, can I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Fritos, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries, thank you. 11.4, Discussion and Possible Approval of the Special Education Director, Mr. Perez?
Yes, I recommend to the board the employment of Ernesto Manriquez as Special Education Director.
Can I have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Fritos, can I have a second? I got a second by Mr. Reno, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries, thank you. 11.5, Discussion and Possible Approval of the Collegiate slash Go Academy Principal, Mr. Perez?
Yes, I recommend to the board the employment of Candra Turner as the principal for Collegiate slash Go Academy.
Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
I got a motion by Mr. Corona, second? I got a second by Mr. Reno, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries, thank you. 11.6, Discussion and Possible Action to Renewal of the Term Contracts for Administrations, I'm sorry, Administrators for the 2024, 2025 school year, Mr. Perez?
I recommend to the board to approve and renew term contracts for Administrators for the '24, '25 school year as discussed in executive session.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
I got a motion by Mr. Fritos, can I have a second? I got a second by Mr. Reno, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries, thank you. 11.7, Discussion and Possible Actions to Renew the Probationary Contracts for Administrators for the '24, '25 school year, Mr. Perez?
Yes, I recommend to the board to approve, to renew probationary contracts for Administrators for the '24, '25 school year as discussed in executive session.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Corona, can I have a second? I got a second by Mr. Reno, all in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries, thank you. 11.8, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Term Contracts for Teachers for the '24, '25 school year, Mr. Perez?
Yes, sir, I recommend to the board to approve term contracts for teachers for the '24, '25 school year. for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as discussed in executive session.
Can I have a motion? I got a motion by Mr. Rena. Can I have a second? I got a second by Mr. Ariel, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Eleven point nine, discussion of possible action to approve the probationary con- Okay, we deleted that one, I'm sorry.
Eleven point nine.
Eleven point nine, sir? Okay, the discussion of possible action to approve the probationary contracts for teachers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Can I have a mo- Sir?
Yes, I recommend to the board to approve the probationary contracts for teachers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as discussed in executive session.
Can I have a motion? I got a motion by Mr. Ariel. Can I have a second? By Mr. Gomez, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to eleven point ten, discussion of possible action on the legal update for the Nata Torment Performing Arts Center, Mr. Perez?
Yes, as discussed in executive session, I ask to approve.
As discussed.
As discussed.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
I got a motion, Mr. Corona. Can I have a second? I got a second, Mr. Rena, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to eleven point eleven, discussion of possible action regarding the twenty twenty-three D C L dash zero two one four nine, Hinkle versus San Benito C I S D. Mr. Perez?
Yes, sir, as discussed in executive session, I ask to approve the item discussed. So move.
I have a motion, Mr. Corona. Can I have a second? I got a second, Mr. Rena, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. At this moment, let's move on to twelve point one, adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn? I got a motion by Mr. Fritos, a second by Mr. Rena. Raise your right hand for approval. Motion carries at exactly eight, we close the meeting at exactly eight forty-four P M. Thank you.